All right, well, welcome everyone. It's 7:01 on Tuesday, January 12th, 2020. This is Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Planning Board, calling this meeting to order.
And it's 2021.
Okay, still, January 12th, 2021. You just edit that out, right? And then this meeting is virtual and it is being recorded. I'll take role and then we'll get on with all the fun stuff. So Mr. Flint.
Here.
Mr. Seiya.
Present.
Mr. Fazdat.
Here.
Ms. Orbital. Ms. McAnaney.
Here.
And Ms. Miller.
Here.
All right, so we've got a couple of things on tonight's agenda. Remember that we are working toward proposing any amendments to bylaws for the town meeting. So we're going to be kind of working toward that at today's meeting and our next meeting in a couple of weeks as well. So keep bringing your ideas and helping us to refine the wording of what we have so far. Tonight, we've got a couple of speakers here who are going to help us with some ideas about green zoning, which we've been talking a lot about in different evaluations of projects. So thinking about how we could more explicitly incorporate them, I think is going to be important, whether it's this year or certainly in subsequent years as well. We have another item on the agenda as well, but that's the one that the applicant has requested to continue the public hearing. So we will be here when we get to that part, we'll entertain a motion to continue it. And the rest of it is just really kind of getting ready for town meeting. And then we will take public comment at the end of our discussion of the green zoning. We'll have open it up to public comment and then general public comment at the end of the evening and certainly about the bylaw amendments as well. Anything that I'm forgetting or anything that anyone would like to add? Yes, Kate?
Before we get started, can we quickly go over the milestones to getting to the point where we're proposing bylaw amendments and what the associated dates are for that? And also, can you just remind me, I saw that we are, there's a June 7th memo for our goals for this year. And I was wondering if there had been anything issued that reflected an updated version of that after our more recent conversation? And this kind of proceeds to the green zoning.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's all related because we want to make sure we're aligning with our goals. I think our most recent version of the goals for the year were July, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so that is the most recent?
Yeah, yeah. So they, you know, we're working towards those and we're also, I think, making any notes for, you know, changes for goals, you know, coming up. Elizabeth, I don't know if you have dates in front of you. I think the warrant is open between, is it mid-February and mid-March?
I can tell you right now.
So while she's checking that, what needs to happen is, you know, we need to agree on the articles we're going to move. And then Elizabeth does a lot of the heavy lifting, kind of drafting them. We also can take turns crafting language or refining language before we submit it for the warrant. But all of that is basically going to have to happen in the next month or so, so that we refine it. So we will kind of look at things offline individually and then make sure we reply with any updates and changes to Elizabeth so that she can make sure to reflect the most current version back to us, so.
So the warrant will open on Saturday, February 27th. And it will close on Friday, March 26th. Draft warrant articles for town stuff should be submitted by March 19th. And, yeah, and town, oh, the Planning Board's public hearing is Thursday, May 13th. And then annual town meeting is June 13th.
And so, you know, Linda, since this is your first year, and you probably know this because perhaps the Finance Committee had the public hearings. You know, so what we would do is that's when we present all of the articles that we plan to present at town meetings so we can get feedback from the public, we can hear what people ask about. And then the moderator can get an idea about what articles might make it to the consent calendar and those are which are going to go to the floor of town meeting. And I don't know what they're going to do this year, so. So other than that, we don't, the only input we would get would be from our regular meetings and the public comment on the individual articles that we discuss. Did that address all the points of the, that need to take place between now and March 19th?
Yes, thank you. Oh, sorry, that answered my question. Thank you.
Good. And that's a good point because we want to kind of keep on target. And so we've got, you know, some articles that we're planning to propose. We're talking about them tonight and you'll see on the proposed, some potential agenda items on our calendar online. You'll see a few town meeting warrant article discussions over the next few meetings. And then what we've got tonight with the green zoning is certainly part of a larger conversation and I think kind of more the long-range plan as well. So we have Kate Hanley and Gary Kleiman on the line. And are, do we, one of you going to present?
Hey, real Kate Hanley, I think Gary's gonna take the lead, but I'm here as well. It's nice to meet you and see you all. I'm the Sustainability Director for the town, if we haven't met yet. Gary, take it away.
Do you need to share your screen, Gary?
No, I, well, it depends. I hope that you guys all received something in your packets, maybe a one-page memo that talked about green zoning and provided some examples for Concord. And then there were also some resources that should have been in your packet, a PowerPoint presentation. And I think there was also an article that talked more broadly about green zoning initiatives in the state or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Did you all get those?
They did.
Okay. And, yes, can you hear me okay? Or do you hear that background noise? I'm just going to turn off a fan so that you don't have.
I can't hear it. I can hear you okay.
Now, I can't hear it either, so that's better. So if you got those things in your packet, all I'm going to do tonight is sort of walk through the one-page memo. The other resources really are just for your benefit to look through at your leisure as you think about whether or not green zoning makes sense. I should start by introducing, you know, first of all, thanking you guys for the invitation to speak tonight. I think the invitation came through Kate as the Town Sustainability Director, but Kate has sort of two hats here because in addition to being the Town Sustainability Director, Kate and I and Alice Kaufman, I see is here as well tonight, and Pam Hill and Mike McAtier all are serving as five Concord representatives in something that the Rocky Mountain Institute is sponsoring. And it's a building electrification accelerator program. And they have developed an accelerator program specifically for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And even though they're a Colorado nonprofit, they have invested a lot of time and energy into thinking very deeply, providing lawyers, providing technical consultants to think very deeply about how towns and cities in Commonwealth of Massachusetts could make progress towards their goals, individual town goals of electrifying buildings. As a former member of the Planning Board, as somebody who used to sit in your seat, I know what a frustration it has been to really not have any tools at your disposal to think about these issues of building electrification and reducing the greenhouse gas footprint thereby of buildings. So it was this amazing boon to have a bunch of us be able to enroll in this accelerator program where we're learning a lot about how to electrify buildings and what cities and towns can do and what they're preempted from doing. And in fact, when this originated, you know, we had as a town been considering Article 40, a general bylaw, a year ago that was proposed for town meeting that was not moved because Brookline had pushed a similar town meeting article, had it adopted, had it reviewed by the Attorney General, and it was rejected by the Attorney General as being preempted by the state building code. So when that happened, when the Attorney General decision came down, our focus very much shifted in this accelerator program. And these lawyers and consultants and others who were helping us think through options for the Massachusetts did a quick review and came up with a menu of sort of five options that the town of Concord could think about. And one of them was to request home rule petition to basically try and enact a Brookline style or Article 40 style by law, just as we had planned. Another was low-hanging fruit sender, a letter of endorsement from the town to the committee, the House and Senate Conference Committee that was considering energy legislation. I think we had planned on sending that letter, but before we could, the Massachusetts Legislature has actually come out with a comprehensive climate bill that is hopefully a day away from being signed by the governor. We don't know. We're hoping the governor will sign this legislation, but if he did, it would basically obviate the need for the first two options that Rocky Mountain Institute gave us. There's no real reason to pursue home rule petition if this legislation passes because it contains a net zero building stretch code. And we already have opted into this stretch energy code. And so we would be able to have a glide path that would take buildings down to net zero in accordance with the rest of the state. The third option that Rocky Mountain Institute had proposed was to think about green zoning options. And so that still remains an option on the table. And that's why we were really happy to be able to come tonight and speak to you. And so I just want to, you know, share a few thoughts on what we have been thinking about as, you know, the group of five of us informed by the Rocky Mountain Institute as to what a Massachusetts town is able to do, we believe, that, you know, would not be preempted by state law and basically put that up for your consideration. So as you're thinking about zoning bylaws you may want to adopt, these are some options that you might want to consider, but we also have a caution or caveat about it. While we think about longer-term options that, you know, may also be appropriate, but probably wouldn't be something you could think about, you know, in the brief period you have or, you know, even a year from now. So I don't know if there are any questions about the Rocky Mountain Institute or this accelerator program before I talk about what's in the memo. Any?
Is that ongoing or is that concluded?
I think there's still, there were a series of workshops that they hosted for us. And I think we've had the last one, but there's an optional one that's still coming up, which is more about, you know, building a coalition or something like that. So the only other thing I would mention about the accelerator is that it's, I think, 17 communities in the Commonwealth that are engaged in this. So, you know, a big part of it was how do we work together? So, you know, to the extent you guys are thinking about green zoning and you'll see some of the examples in the resources that we provided in the packet. You know, there are other communities out there that are thinking along these same lines. So you're not alone and there might be others who you could turn to or we could put you in touch with that might be able to help you think through options.
Gary, if I could just ask a quick question to connect the dots for me. If the legislation has signed into law that allows for that stretch code getting new to net zero, is there any action required by the Planning Board to adopt that in Concord? Or is that something that's a general bylaw? How does that work? Do you know?
Yeah, so, well, we're already a green community's community and we've already opted in. So we have the stretch energy code as our baseline energy code anyway.
Okay.
So it just, it would force the stretch energy code towards.
I see. Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
You wouldn't have to do anything but the state. This wouldn't happen overnight, unlike Article 40, which, you know, if we had adopted it and the Attorney General had accepted it or the Brookline-type natural gas infrastructure ban, you know, that would have been implemented immediately. This will require the Department of Energy Resources to be granted the authority to develop the building code, taking it away basically from BBRS. It would require them to then define net zero buildings and it would require them to implement, you know, a new stretch energy code that would, you know, progress over time. So it takes some time. It's not going to be an instant fix.
I got you. Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, and so Gary, just to, I think, further clarify what you're saying. It's basically like, it's important to still consider these other green zoning examples because we could basically create them overnight, so to speak. And they would be, could be effective more immediate than, you know, waiting around for a couple of years at least, right? For the new, like, policies to be in place, right?
Right. The advantage of the new policy is that, you know, if you're a green community and you've opted into the stretch energy code, it's mandatory. So all buildings would have to meet that energy code. The advantage of green zoning is that it would, you know, be implemented more, potentially implemented more quickly, but it is optional. It is not something you can mandate. You know, so these are examples of things that you might offer as an incentive and there's sort of two range types of incentives. So if you want, I can go on and talk about the memo, which basically is drawn from the PowerPoint presentation that I provided to you and the memo that you have from RMI. So there's much more detail available to you in those other resources.
Gary, the memo you refer to is, is it called Green Zoning Examples for Concord? Is that, okay, thanks.
So that one-page memo, Green Zoning Examples for Concord, is something that, you know, I wrote with my colleagues on the RMI Accelerator Group, you know, just regular citizens of Concord, just. But it's drawn from some of the resources that we provided you. In case you don't have time to look at it, you know, as a former Planning Board member, I kind of looked at what they were offering and said, what makes sense for cities? What makes sense for towns? So I tried to narrow it just through my lens as to what I thought might be an approach that would work for you guys. But, you know, obviously, this is just to precede a discussion for you all to think about what you as Planning Board want to do. From my perspective, the first step would be for the town to adopt some sort of formal definition of what a net zero building would be. And I think that, you know, it, thinking again, as a former Concord Planning Board member, I think you want to think about, you know, the typical uses in the town of Concord. So you might want to differentiate what a net zero single-family dwelling is from what a net zero PRD is or, you know, residential cluster development or what, you know, a net zero subdivision is. So coming up with those definitions, there may be some subtle differences that you might want to think about as you're defining. But primarily, I think what you want to do in defining that zero is to think about some metrics. You know, are you going to adopt a passive house standard, something based on LEED, something by, you know, the Living Building Challenge or HERS ratings? You know, how are you going to define, how are you going to measure zero? And, you know, or you could use a greenhouse gas standard. But coming up with the metrics are important. And then defining, you know, what has to be zero? Is it onsite combustion that has to cease? Is it, you know, net electrification? You know, so there's a lot of different factors here that you can think about in terms of defining what is zero. And, you know, again, these resources, PowerPoint from RMI, go into it in more detail. There are a lot of other resources we could point you to in terms of, you know, what some towns have adopted as definitions. Somerville has a definition of net zero that you could look at. It's based on the Passive House Institute. But these are things that you as a Planning Board would want to think about and make some decisions on. And then decide how you treat on or off-site renewable energy procurement, energy storage onsite. You know, if you have a Tesla power wall, is that different from someone who's just doing net metering with the town providing storage? And, you know, whether you include any sort of credit or whatever for electric vehicle charging infrastructure, whether that's an additional mandate that you want to include in your definition of net zero, even though it has nothing to do with sort of, you know, the zero metric or electrification being required for affordable housing units or exempted from affordable housing. So these are just things you want to think about in your definition. But then, step two, and here I want to be careful because I was cautioned actually by even some of our own members in the group. I mean, I recognize that the zoning bylaw that we have now is in place for very good reasons. And so you would not want to consider giving incentives that might relax that zoning without being very mindful and very careful in thinking through why you might want to grant some sort of relaxation, including density, including height. You know how hard we've worked or the town of Concord has worked over many, many decades to craft a zoning bylaw that meets Concord's needs. So if you consider offering some kind of incentive that would potentially relax some of those zoning requirements, you would want to do so with a full view of the complexity of, you know, what you're doing and, you know, knock-on effects and things like that. And really make sure that you're not going to result in any unintended consequences. But that said, there are some other communities in the Commonwealth that are considering offering height or density bonuses in certain areas of town in exchange for net zero construction. There are some towns that are considering waiving things like parking requirements for commercial construction. There are some towns that are looking at how to expedite permitting reviews and things like that. You know, an example of that that comes to mind for me is, you know, you've just added some new sustainability criterion in the site planner view. So those were added for very good reasons. I'm not saying that, you know, they, you don't need those new sustainability criterion in the site planner view, but you might, for instance, offer as an enticement, if somebody comes in with an application of a net zero building, maybe they, you can waive the sustainability review of those elements, sustainability-related elements of the site plan review, for an example. I'm not suggesting you do that. I'm just trying to lay out some examples of how you might consider all of the aspects of the zoning bylaw and consider where net zero building incentives might fit. For PRDs, I recognize you've strengthened the PRD requirements to try and bring PRDs more into line with the kind of PRD applications that y'all had been expecting. I won't include myself in that anymore, but, you know, being disappointed with the quality of some of the PRD applications, you could now offer a choice, perhaps, either submit a net zero PRD under the old rules or submit a regular PRD under the new rules, which don't have any, you know, binding criterion on greenhouse gas emissions. So that, you know, could be sort of an option for you, something to think about. And finally, creation of a net zero special overlay district. I will bring to your attention the town of Northampton that has sort of taken two elements and brought them together here. They have created a special overlay district where they have a HERS rating requirement that is, you know, I think it's below 1,200, no, it's not 1,200, maybe it's 2,400 square feet. If you're below 2,400 square feet, you have to hit a HERS rating of something like 41. And if you're above 2,400 square feet, then you have a different HERS rating. But, you know, they're sort of combining together, an overlay district with a minimum performance standard, you know, based on energy. Again, it's something that I think the Attorney General has not yet ruled on, so I don't know whether that's going to withstand a legal challenge or Attorney General review. Right now, there's no legal challenges on it. But if it does pass, that is something that you could easily think about. Certainly, as the Chair of the NMI StarMet Reuse Planning Committee, we have been considering and we are planning on recommending to the Select Board that some sort of sustainability overlay district be placed on any development that would happen should the town take ownership of the StarMet parcel. But you could think about whether a sustainability overlay district is appropriate for other parts of Concord. You know, I don't know where that would be. I'll leave that up to you, but just wanted to put that out there. Of course, there are a lot of other types of green zoning that deal with things other than electrification. I think you got an email comment today about tree protection. There's, you know, water use issues, green roofs, there's a lot of other aspects of, you know, green zoning beyond just the greenhouse gas footprint and/or energy use. But certainly incentives are one way to deal with this. And I offer these range of incentives as opposed to financial incentives because, you know, I think our group, as we think about how we can serve as a resource to the town in trying to achieve the ultimate goal of building electrification, we are pursuing some other options, looking into whether or not there might be ways to get either state and federal financing or develop sources of town financing that might be able to support providing fiscal incentives. But at this point, I don't have any ideas for you there. Nobody has money. You know, we have a pandemic, bad time to ask for additional funding. And I think, you know, following the long-range plan, we sort of feel obligated to commit to, you know, no net fiscal impact of any of these.
Gary.
Initiative, so.
Yep. When you were talking about fiscal, financial incentives, are you thinking for municipal buildings? Or I'm just trying to.
Right now, our thoughts are really early and I don't know that I even have, you know, consensus among the group of five of us of what we're thinking about. But I certainly would be thinking about something that would be, again, I think would be very much related to what you guys develop in terms of your definition of net zero. If you come up with a definition for net zero commercial construction that differs from a net zero single-family dwelling, I can imagine being able to offer different types of incentives for those different definitions. So I think the upfront falls to you.
So, I mean, help me think about, we, this is such an important discussion and I know this won't be the last discussion. And you have probably heard, you know, all of us just really feel kind of powerless trying to, you know, vocally encourage developers to do all-electric or energy efficiency. And it feels like an uphill battle. So, you know, the ideas you have are really important. I want to think a little bit about, kind of like you're saying, what's, what's in the purview of the Planning Board? So for example, if somebody was constructing a single-family house, normally that would just be a building permit. And there are certain cases, but limited cases, that a single-family home would come before the Planning Board, right?
Right.
And, I mean, this is not just for Gary. This is like for Elizabeth and all of us. Just one, in other words, I'm kind of thinking, is there a way to prioritize kind of the biggest bang for our buck and changes in saying like, well, we think this is the most likely to have an impact if we were to do, you know, not municipal buildings. I think Concord is already making plans for doing municipal buildings or things like that. And I can't remember why, if I read that or if I just made that up. But, you know, and then there's, like you said, commercial buildings. And I'm just trying to think of the items that come before the Planning Board or even the ZBA.
Exactly. So you're going to the question of authority. And clearly, in this current policy environment, you have limited authority. You don't control the building energy codes. But what you do control are things, and I made a list of this and I was struggling with, you know, do you want to define the net zero in terms of the uses, which I think you do? Or initially, I was thinking, you know, in terms of your authority. You know, site plan reviews, special permits, non-conforming uses. You know, those are the things that appear before you. The by right uses don't necessarily come to you or approval not required, right? You know, those don't. But if we ever get to the point where we have financial incentives, I think there's an opportunity to open it up and offer these incentives to by right development. You know, right now, you're limited to these other things, you know. So non-conforming uses, well, maybe, you know, a net zero building you want to allow to have a non-conforming use, you know. Anyway, you're right to ask the question. I don't have a good answer for you, but I do think that you want to think about each of those uses in the various contexts by which you have authority to, you know, regulate. And for the time being, when any incentives or inducements you could offer are limited to, you know, what's within your authority, I think that's where you want to think about, you know, what are you willing to? And here I want to be, again, careful and I want to let Kate speak and I want to let Alice speak and others in the Rocky Mountain Institute Accelerator Group because I know they would have cautions about me saying this next line. But before you, you know, give up. But before you, you know, give up any other zoning priority, like density or, you know, floor area ratio. I mean, we fought really hard, I think, to establish a floor area ratio to combat mationization. The last thing we want to do is allow mationization if it's a, you know, sorry, we're not supposed to use that term, you know, excessive floor area ratio, if it, just because it is, you know, net zero. People are still concerned about town character. And so, you know, maybe it makes sense in certain residency where, you know, you're trying to increase density, but only for two families. Those are the kinds of trade-offs that I think you have to be really careful about. And I got pushed back on this. So you want to make sure you're not going to have unintended consequences by offering some of these incentives.
Kate, I see you have something.
Yeah, I can't imagine relaxing the floor area ratio in this context. So it seems to me like the option would be to make it more restrictive and then let, put the incentive in to allow people to be back where we are today. So it would be a two-step process. First, lower the ceiling with an incentive that you can stick with this old ceiling. So we're not, we're not relaxing anything in that sense. Right?
I, I mean, I think that's a good idea. Just to, to touch on that point, was there any data about energy usage in, in your group that you talked about by square footage or things like that? You know, anything that we
We did not, we, we did not dig into the town data. I think that's the next step is to, you know, just as we did with the floor area ratio discussion, you know, Matt Johnson really dug in and looked at the, you know, how, how many houses, you know, tear down and rebuilds had been done over the past, you know, three or four decades and saw how the floor area ratio had changed over that time. I definitely think, you know, doing the same thing with energy data would be ideal, but I'm not sure how much energy data exists and I would
Yeah, I, I think, I feel like that's always been kind of this dead end. Kate Hanley, have you heard anything about that? And this is kind of a tangent, a tangent, so I don't want to go too far down it. But, you know, have you heard about any aggregate data from CMLP about energy usage? Or how, how it has changed townwide over the last decade or two decades?
Yeah, it's a great question. And in general, energy data is difficult, especially on, you know, more of a individual level or even just, you know, by certain sectors. But it's definitely possible aggregate data. And I was actually, I'm actually just pulling together an update for the Climate Action Advisory Board on our greenhouse gas inventory. The last one we did was 2016. So I have new data on energy consumption by sector, so residential and, and non-residential for 2019. So we do have aggregate data. We can, you know, get more access to that data, thankfully, because we have CMLP. So especially on the electricity front, we have access to that data and happy to help facilitate that. I would just add on kind of the, the resource front, you know, the, this accelerator program's been really great because they've, in addition to giving us guidance and coaching on what's legally possible and what we might consider for municipalities in Massachusetts, we've, they've also compiled a lot of resources and data and, you know, as, as specific as possible to Massachusetts. And so just an offer to you all, if there are specific data points or resources or case studies that would be helpful for you, please let us know. We're happy to pull what we have or, or customize in a way that makes it more conquer specific, if that's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm curious to know whether the, an incentive like this for electrification was, is successfully passed in the, in, in the context of the Attorney General rejecting the general bylaw. It's, it would, it would seem logic, it would, it seems like there's definitely an argument that an incentive is different enough. But it also seems like you could, that, there's arguments on the other side too. So I'm, I'm curious to know how confident we are that and regulating by incentive electrification stands must, passes muster.
But, but that's the oxymoron. It's not regulating by incentive. You are either regulating and it's a requirement or it's an incentive. So as long as it's optional, that seems to be the legal threshold. As long as somebody, they're not required to do it, then
And, and as the Attorney General, and has one of these been endorsed by the Attorney General in, in the state of Massachusetts?
I mean, there's a, there's a number in, I think it's in one of the, one of the documents that Gary shared with Elizabeth. I mean, I know for sure that Somerville recently updated their zoning and it includes this definition of net zero and includes a lot of incentives for development. You know, I know some are, they're a city, so it's a bit different. But we can dig in and see if there's other town examples that we know for sure. But it does seem that the, these incentives have, have passed muster.
Thanks.
And definitely for sure, Elizabeth can probably tell you there are density bonuses and things for other things, not necessarily electrification. But, so I think it is a valid legal structure to offer incentives through zoning bylaws.
Thanks.
And so the thing, so when I hear density bonus, it seems like that applies to PRDs. Does it apply to anything else?
Could be a subdivision, maybe?
Subdivision? Yeah, again, I'm trying, I'm thinking about, you know, what's, what's the biggest impact? Is it, you know, single-family home construction? Is it, you know, PRDs, subdivisions?
I, I would want to think about it in the context of your other initiatives, like you were, you know, I, I think you didn't move it at last year's town meeting because of the pandemic, but you were looking at two-family initiatives. So maybe, you know, it's related to, you know, two-family development. You allow height exemptions or, or density exemptions or, or multiple family units, you know? Not going for mansion, mationization, but, or, you know, single-family homes, but maybe multi-family homes. You know, you might want to think about that, but maybe not, I don't know.
I mean, they're, they're all good things, but I want to make sure that planning board members ask all these questions and, and then, and, and certainly Alice, if you have things to add and Kate Hanley, if you have more to add, we, we certainly want to hear from you. And then, I'd love to hear from the public. I just want to think about, you know, what we might do going forward. So keep that in your mind as, as you're asking questions of our, of our guests tonight.
Yeah, so one, one thing I wanted to ask is, you know, is, has the institute that you're working with, have they, you know, seen? And what is the success rate that they've seen in other states and communities that they've attempted to implement similar? You know, similar processes and, and everything. I'm just curious, like, because I'm thinking about our own experience in the past with different PRDs, for example. And not, not just one in particular, but in general, like we have, we've tried sort of on the fly to incentivize them to do one thing or another. And we basically just get roadblocked every time with the same reason across the board, which is, it's not in our financial interest to do this. Thank you very much. And so I, I'm just curious, like, if putting these things on paper is really going to result in anything different?
I'm not sure it's putting it on paper as much as the planning board consistently referring people back to it. I, I remember when we didn't have any parking criteria, right? You know, people are always looking to get out of parking requirements and we finally codified that in, you know, its guidance. But it's like, here are five things that we're going to ask every time you come to ask for a parking waiver. And after a while, people started coming to us and saying, and here's how we address, you know, because it goes in the planner report. And it's like, here's how we address one, here's how we address two, here's it, you know? So if you make it known that, you know, you, you expect net zero building applications to be of a certain type and to meet certain criteria. And you make it known that there are, you know, opportunities to perhaps relax or perhaps qualify for financial incentives. If you guys can think of a way to, you know, incentivize it financially, then, you know, it'll happen. In terms of, you know, Massachusetts law is unique relative to other states. So it really, I, I think the resources that we shared and the resources that Kate has access to through the accelerator group that are specific to Massachusetts are probably the guide you want to. I mean, yes, there are a lot of examples of this kind of thing in California, but they've got a different legal framework. So they can do a lot of this.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the, the, a lot of success in California and Cal, and Colorado have been just creating green building codes for the municipality, which obviously we can't do in Massachusetts. So part of, you know, that was really, I think, the impetus for Rocky Mountain Institute to take on, you know, looking specifically at Massachusetts solutions because we do have that unique limitation that doesn't allow us to do what some California and Colorado communities have done.
Have you seen, have you seen any examples of? I, I guess my question is about the definition of zero. Then at zero, have you seen any examples where the takes into consideration construction methods and materials of, rather than energy use?
You know, I don't think they, for, I mean, Somerville has a definition that's based on passive house standards. The LEED standards, I think, do take into account life cycle and building material characteristics. And so there are probably some net zero definitions that include LEED, but I don't think that that's what makes it zero. You know, there's usually some energy metric or greenhouse gas emission metric that is what, you know, has to net out. But their definitions, once they're adopted, becomes, you know, a statutory or required definition. And that can include other things. And that's what I was saying, like EV charging infrastructure has nothing to do with zero. But you can say that to be considered a conquered net zero house, you have to have it. And so you could do the same thing with the building materials.
Or a life cycle, I guess that was my question.
Yeah, I think that would be the LEED standard. So they look at that.
If I can follow on to that question, I'm sorry, Linda.
Linda has a question, do you mind?
Go ahead, Burton, that's fine.
Okay, I was wondering if Kate or Gary, in, in looking at this unique situation of Concord having its own municipal light plant that's, that's moving to, to implement, you know, green energy, acquiring green energy, whether in defining net zero or, for lack of a better term, green, green building. If there's a particular combination or approach that you think makes sense for Concord? I'm sensitive to the, the cost with LEED and it being very burdensome or, and, and different things like that where here we've got, we, we should be thinking about this in conjunction with the direction that the light plant is going in, in terms of energy procurement. So for example, it may not, may not make a whole lot of sense to give somebody a bunch of credit for solar panels if they can get, you know, if we could get hydro or, or wind energy from the light plant. So have you guys given, considered that in terms of what our target should be?
It's a really good question. I mean, I think the, the kind of commonality is that we've seen a lot of the net zero definitions that would also make sense for Concord would be, you know, no onsite combustion. So meaning all electric systems for heating, cooling, cooking. You know, you could have exemptions for certain types of, of cooking and the like. But really the key is no onsite combustion and solar ready seems to be a common trend, right? So whether they're solar PV or not, but it's ready for solar. And, right, and, you know, EV charging ready, right? So it's up to, you know, the homeowner or the resident to put in the EV charging, but that, that's all there. So all the electrical work is there. You know, I think that what the Somerville definition by using the passive house and the zero carbon definitions, it's a bit more all-encompassing in the sense of at the building envelope too, and making sure that it's an efficient and resilient and comfortable building in addition to being all-electric. So I think there's probably a few examples that we could pull off of, but I think they would all be pretty similar for Concord as they would be for others. Just the all-electric piece of it, I think, makes, makes sense for Concord, given that we have CMLP and they're working on decarbonizing our electricity supply.
Okay, thank you, Kate.
I don't know if Alice wants to comment on that, but Alice is on the light board and part of our Rocky Mountain Institute Accelerator Group.
Thank you. I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add. I think that all of the options are on the table and a lot of communities are trying a lot of different approaches to figure out which ones stick and which ones result in the outcomes that they're looking for. And that is how to have energy efficient and all-electric homes wherever possible. So I think Wellesley has a really good definition of sustainability. They have a whole planning tool that they've developed for site plan review and building review. And that might be a good place to start by looking at what, how they've defined sustainability for their review of projects that are coming into Wellesley. They're more like us because they're not a, they're not a city. You know, Somerville is very great, they're great progressive, but they're a city. So they are exempt from review by the AG's office and they have fewer constraints under the state building code.
And Wellesley also has a municipal light plant. So I think that's a good, good point of reference.
Wellesley is also a representative town government as opposed to your town, pure town meeting. Yeah, when you have representative town meeting, sometimes it's easier to get things through than on the floor of town meeting when
Couple thousand people can show up. Yeah, Brookline is also representative town meeting.
Linda, did you get to ask your question yet?
I just, I guess, again, being the new one on the board here, I just wondered, what is the financial disincentive for net zero for the developer or the builder or the homeowner? Which is sort of what is the incremental cost that we're trying to essentially cover with our incentive?
It's a very good question and it's hotly debated. We do have some resources that we can share with you. You know, when Article 40 was being developed, Charlie Parker and Brad Hubbard Nelson did a lot of work on this and they came up with an estimate of somewhere between 5 and 10% of an incremental capital cost, you know, to have extra insulation, triple-glazed windows, you know, heat pumps versus traditional construction. But there are other, many other studies that find, you know, no real, you know, less than 5% incremental cost. And the homeowner often can recoup those costs, but that again is questioned by some. So, you know, pick your study, you get different statistics, but we can share some resources with you. But it's not, it's a very small increment relative to the total capital investment in building a new house. So that's why for new construction, that's the time to do it because it, it represents a relatively small fraction of the total capital cost.
Right, I mean, that's what has confused me, you know, just watching the, the applicants that I've been able to see is that there seems to be a disconnect between those in, in the development construction side who say, sorry, we can't do anything net zero because it's prohibitive in terms of the expense. And, you know, some of the comments from members of the board and, and members of the public who come and say, the economics do work. And so it, it seems to me that maybe within regard to our process of reviews or building reviews, that, that maybe the issue is just to get the information somehow on the table so that we're all on the same page and that the financial decision doesn't get in the way of what I, I think would be a, a common goal, if people realize that, you know, the economics are not so overwhelming. So I don't know if that's a way that can go into the permitting process that it doesn't require really what could be rather onerous incentives that maybe aren't really necessary if we all had the same fact basis to work from. I don't know.
I mean, I think you, you're speaking extremely logically, which I think pretty much stops at the door of most developers and tradespeople at the risk of like, I'm, I'm not going to bad mouth anybody, but people are very comfortable with what they know and the construction methods that they use and the materials they use and, you know, the suppliers they use. And, and certainly what I've seen in my professional life is that as soon as you is that as soon as you say, you know, well, have you thought about, you know, using calculations to properly size that air conditioning unit, they're like, why would I do that? I'm going to take that out. I'm going to put in the exact same one. So you could show everybody anything you want. And so that's why I think it has to be coupled with some sort of carrot, um, some sort of incentive, uh, before people change, before developers, before builders change their habits. Um, I, I see no reason why you couldn't also do education. I think that's a, a pretty important part of it, but I mean, I, I just feel like that's always been the, the, the barrier is, is contractors and builders.
Yep, totally agree.
Alice, did you want to?
Can I, um, add to that? I think Kristen's right. The transaction costs for a builder, a developer are, are considered high to that developer because he, there are, he already, he or she already has the supply chain figured out and knows how to install certain things. We've talked to a, a number of developers when we were developing Article 40 and we were basically told, no, this is what we do. I know my business. But there, I, maybe Kate remembers, I think it was in Somerville, um, where in the project, when the project comes before the planning board, they have to demonstrate the fight, the fiscal um, constraints over the two ways of developing a house. Like they have to do the cost analysis of a regular house that they normally would do and a cost analysis for, if they did a passive design with electric, um, electric heat. And that, it, it doesn't necessarily mean they will choose one over the other, but the planning board has data on that particular house according to the developer. Wasn't it Somerville, uh, that did that, Kate? Do you remember?
I think it's Cambridge that does that, yeah.
And we can find, we can find the language that they use, but they basically put the onus on the developer to do that. But then, you know, when we thought about something like that for Article 40, it comes back to who is the arbiter for Concord to say, I think it's reasonable to pay that extra three and a half percent of capital cost upfront. And the developer is, I don't think it's reasonable either. So I don't know how you arbitrate that. But the idea was, uh, but from, I guess it's Cambridge, is get it on the table. Make them think about, is it really cost prohibitive to do this?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to.
Could we have some requirement like that in, in Concord? I mean, with, or with either the planning board or the building department require that there be a, a similar in, you know, self-education?
It's a possibility, I would think. I, I think we should, if, if that's of an interest and we think that that particular proposal has, um, has merit for Concord, we should really study the Cambridge bylaw and see what it is that the developers required to do in Cambridge and see what applies to Concord. And then do we have the infrastructure in Concord to review the analysis and help make a decision for the developer based on our town goals for, for building electrification and greenhouse gas reductions, help them make the right decision. And maybe then you think about an incentive. Is there, do we have appropriate incentives to provide that developer to go ahead? We were, we've been talking about potential financing options where we can have very low interest or zero interest loans that are offset by, uh, maybe the light plants would be able to sponsor as part of incentive program and offset on the, um, the loan amount that a developer would take to do a particular part of the project.
And, and so, and, and I, I think that that kind of thing is going to be important for, uh, you know, homeowners to try to take advantage of that. And, and so I don't know how, you know, this board works with the light plant board and, and things like that. I think that's important to capture. And maybe like we were talking about kind of right before its meeting started, maybe there'll be new funds, you know, coming in as, as the cities, states and the country are working towards kind of these, these climate goals. There could be kind of money stimulus money coming in. Um, but you know, in 2000 and I don't know, 2012 or something, uh, you know, the state put $9 million in a fund to help, uh, people in Western Mass rebuild more energy efficiently after that tornado, after the little tornado, it was a big tornado out there, but the tornado went through. Hardly anyone took them up on it. And it was so disappointing because there was $9 million. And, but it was because the contractors were not, you know, they're just saying, well, that's more paperwork, you have to do things like that. So there's so much education that needs to happen, but at the same point, if it's not, you know, above and beyond in, in terms of a financial incentive or, or to, you know, really make that paperwork process easier, move that supply chain. It's just a really big lift to get that over. So, um, but in terms of, you know, the homeowner, if the homeowner can access funds, then, then you get that push from the consumer side to say, well, you know, builder, I do want this. So that's a challenge. Um, Haley, I think you had something to add, right?
Yeah, I mean, just, um, getting back to kind of the conversation that Linda brought up. Um, I mean, and, and Linda, for your benefit too, I mean, the way we kind of decided what to adopt, um, as far as sustainability related to the PRD last year was in, in part anyways, like just going and digging up all the existing relevant, uh, you know, by law language from other towns and then going through it and saying like, does this work? Like, can we just basically like take it from their bylaws? And so, I mean, I think that would make a lot of sense for us to start to do from Somerville and Cambridge and wherever else it makes sense. So just kind of go get that language and everybody look at it and say, does this work for us? And if we need to tweak it, we tweak it. But that's basically what we did for the PRD as far as adding, adding sustainability criteria and, and stuff like that. Um, but I also was just kind of mentioning that I've been, I was spending some time on the earth removal bylaw. And, um, related to kind of requiring alternative analyses, um, I just wanted to mention like I randomly came across Plymouth's, um, earth removal bylaw and they, I'm looking at it right now. They, they require an, an alternative analysis, um, that the developer do. Uh, so that they're, and, and looking at it considering, um, you know, an alternative plan that would minimize the amount of earth removed or minimize the area of land disrupted or, but it's, but it's basically just like requiring the developer to look at it at different, at in different angles, um, rather than just saying, here's our plan that we're going to do, we're going to do it this way because that's the way we do it. Um, so I think it's something, it's a little bit similar to what you're describing, I think. We're putting that on it, putting that onus on the developer.
I've just seen that, you know, we have all the, all the, um, documentation from the structural engineers and from the traffic studies that are required and so on and so forth. Why isn't there a net zero study that has to be submitted with an application? Why not?
These, these are all good things. I, um, I, I think we still have more questions, more discussions, and I think this is, um, and, and I think we want to think a little bit about a timeline, you know, over what period of time would we need to figure out what we, you know, would like to propose? And then, you know, over what period of time could that be, you know, adopted at town meeting or proposed at town meeting? Could I suggest that we, um, before we continue this discussion, which I don't want to end it, and I certainly want to hear from the public as well. Um, we did have a 7:30 item on the agenda and it's possible we have an applicant on the line. So I, I just want to make sure that maybe we could take care of that. That was the, um, definitive subdivision plan application for Quarry North Road LLC to create a one lot subdivision with access from the town of Sudbury for the Concord portion of the tract at 48 Y Pittsburgh Turnpike. And I thought maybe we could just, um, digress for a minute. So we could kind of get that off the plate and then continue back to this discussion before we segue into, um, town meeting. Uh, the more town meeting, our article discussion. So the applicant is requested to continue the public hearing without discussion until our February 23rd meeting, 2021. Elizabeth, I don't know if we have a time, um, on February 23rd that this item will come up.
Um, no, there's, um, I don't think there's anything else um, on the planning board's agenda currently. Um, and there's also, um, besides continuing, the board needs to accept the time extension to February 25th.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to do both of those things. That's continue the public meeting until, uh, February 23rd. I guess, should we say seven o'clock or 7:30?
Um, seven o'clock's fine.
Okay. And then, um, the time to file until February 25th.
Uh, except, except the time extension.
Except the time extension. Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion, um, that we, um, grant a time extension to February 25th and.
So.
I have to say it first. Okay.
There you go. Wait. There you go.
I move that we accept the grant of a time extension to February 25th and continue the public hearing without discussion to seven o'clock on February 23rd, um, both of 2021. Um, for the definitive subdivision plan application of Quarry North Road LLC to create a one lot subdivision with access to the town of Sudbury for the Concord portion of the tract at 48 Y Pittsburgh Turpipe parcel 3419.
Is there a second?
A second to that.
All right, let's, uh, let's take a vote. Um, Mr. Seah.
Yes.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Bosdett?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital? Ms. Miller? Did I, did I hear her? Linda, did you say yes?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Ms. McAnaney?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes.
And who, who seconded?
Burton.
Burton, all right, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Sorry for that, um, small detour there. I just wanted to make sure that we, um, have that on our, our calendar for next time. Um, and then planning board members, do you have other questions right now? Or should we hear from the public a little bit? And then, uh, before we think about making a plan for it.
Um, I'll, I'll just make a comment that the, the thing that really, um, kind of sticks out for me is that we have FAR, we have the FAR on our current roster of goals for this year. Anyway, so, um, I think this is great timing, um, and appreciate hearing from, from you and your team, uh, Gary and Kate. Because now we can talk more specifically about the idea of, of putting an incentive with FAR as we're, as we're drilling down on it over the next couple of weeks. So, um, to me, that's the most, um, immediate thing that I think we can get our arms around.
Although, to be clear, I think, Gary, you were saying you were not in favor of that. Is that, is that correct?
Well, it depends. I, I could see offering an FRA, FAR relaxation in the case of a, a single family to a two-family conversion within, uh, you know, residency. That might make sense to me, but I don't know. I would have to think a lot more about it. I, I haven't really thought about the conditions under which it might make sense to play with any of these incentives. That's your job. Uh, I just wanted to sort of give some ideas.
Other, other questions from the board yet? Um, I'd like to open it up to public comment, um, since we have these, uh, great uh, folks on the line with a wealth of knowledge and you, and you might give us some other things to think about as well. I believe you should be able to raise your hand and we can unmute you or promote you so that you can, um, share your comment. When you do, please state your name and address for the record. And Elizabeth, I don't see any hands up yet. I just want to make sure that, uh, I can see them when they go up. Obviously, it's, it's a very, um, a very discussed topic. Um, we, we've certainly brought it up with a lot of recent applicants, um, and, you know, it's always disappointing when we we don't have a lot of teeth behind what we can do. All right. So I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing any, any hands up from public comment, but hopefully we will continue to hear from people. Elizabeth, maybe you can help us think about a timeline. Um, for, you know, how we might want to work on this because this is going to take kind of some more research on our part. In anything that you heard tonight, would you think that anything would be ready for, um, presenting the town meeting in the next couple of months? Or do you think it would need more time to develop based on kind of the different, some of the different things that you've heard?
I think it would be very challenging to, um, introduce this new concept as a zoning bylaw amendment for this town meeting. Um, you know, you're basically talking, you have two and a half months.
That would, that would be very challenging.
And, and, and that's kind of what was my impression too, but I think that also gives us an idea to more thoughtfully think about, um, how even, you know, step by step, what we might do and say, we want to get here. So we're going to try to do this first and then that first, we're going to try these combinations of things. Um, so I do think it's, you know, I, I, I don't want to let this drop by any means. I think we need to steadily pursue um, different avenues. So I want to think about, um, if there's anybody on the board who wants to kind of take the next steps about maybe, um, reviewing more, more in-depth the resources that were provided. And maybe coming back to the planning board with, you know, based on the goals that, that we have for the year, based on what we're presenting this year and, and what's been going on. If there, if there's somebody or who would like to, um, take this next pass of this and, and I see a hand up. That's, that's the kind of enthusiasm I like.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I mean, I think some of the feedback last year was, you know, disappointment that we weren't doing more.
Haley, you're breaking up.
I'm better. Yep. Okay.
A little bit better.
Yeah, I just, I just was saying that I felt like a lot of the feedback we got last year um, in our public meetings was disappointment that we weren't, you know, doing more on this topic. So I know it's a lot to, you know, think about doing. And I'm not saying we need to do, you know, all of it super fast, but I, I feel like we should try to do something incremental this year. And what, you know, than what we had already had sort of in the works.
Well, that's great. Um, and so Haley can reach out to Kate, Gary and Alice, um, for additional specific resources. And Haley, if you wouldn't mind kind of bringing what you find back, um, to the board so we can continue to discuss it. We do have, you know, time on upcoming meetings, um, specifically to talk about our, our upcoming, um, town meeting articles, but I think this is important enough to keep in this, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we just dig in and see again what Somerville and Cambridge and Wellesley and whoever else like already has papered, I mean, that makes it our, we don't need to like trot our own path here if there's something we can easily adopt.
Um, Alice, I got an email from um, some folks, including Mary Beth Martello in Wellesley. Um, tell, and, and, and Elizabeth will kind of distribute, um, that link to Wellesley's municipal sustainable building guidelines. Um, tell me about the, the folks who were there on, on that email. I think they were, it sounded like they were interested in what we were doing so that we've kind of worked together.
Um, the person who wrote the original email, whose name I can't recall, um, is on the, the RMI accelerator with us and kind of reached out because we had submitted your work from town meeting, the PRD requirements to, as one of the resource documents to the RMI group. And so it's one of the case studies that's included from, at, on the resource listed RMI. And he was following up, having read that, say, tell me more about it. How'd you get that? And so we know it's new enough. Yeah, it was new enough that, that we may not have results to report.
That's what I was wondering if we have. Have we had any PRDs since that bylaw was adopted about the
Um, so the sustainability criteria are in the site plan review requirement, which it's only until this past town meeting, site plan review was not required for PRDs.
Okay.
Um, so, but I can tell you, um, if I can find my notes in this mess. Um, I worked with Nancy today and since the site plan criteria for sustainability was adopted, um, there were eight, seven or eight site plans, um, that had that criteria in 2018. There were five in 2019 and so far there have been six in 2000. Well, there were six in 2020.
So as Wellesley looks at that as a possible model for them, they were just trying to get a little more information about how, is it too new to have any, um, feedback? a little more information about, is it too new to have any feedback? What have we learned? What should they learn from what we've learned? I think that's what they were asking about. And maybe it was our, I don't know, I thought it was a great start for us, so we added it to the resource document. It was immediately picked up by the team. There are 100 participants on the RMI accelerator group. So it reached, and it's 17 communities, so it gets exposure, just like we're reporting out the things that we found in Somerville, Cambridge, Northampton.
Well. So at this point, we're going to wait a couple of minutes and wait for Kristin to come back, unless she does not come back after a few minutes, and then at that point, Burton gets to take over the meeting.
Didn't know she was calling.
See if she texts me. So I'm going to say. Go ahead, Burton.
Okay.
There she is.
Sorry about that. Did everybody wrap up in my absence?
Sorry, no.
Okay, so I think where we left that was all of the developers are going to build net zero homes and all electric. Meeting adjourned. No, Haley, thank you for taking this up. And yeah, if we can move on anything faster than future town meetings, that's great. But if not, I think we'll have a thoughtful plan for moving forward and subsequent meetings. So Kate, Alice, and Gary, thank you very much. I bet your work on the accelerator was pretty exciting. They have some great stuff, RMI does. So keep sending us the resources. We'd love to learn more, so.
Thank you all. Appreciate the time.
Kristin, there's, even though you asked for public comment, there is somebody with their hand up.
Oh, good. Sorry, I did not see it. It's Andy, but I think it's maybe somebody else, but you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear your comments, please.
Hi, it's Pamela Drit. You were right, at 13 Concord Green. Thank you. And I know I've been to several meetings. I know there was, Citizens Climate Lobby had one on a builder's group, which would be a great resource specifically aimed for builders for this kind of thing, to get over their hump of, we do it the way we always have done it, and that's the best way, and we can't afford to do it any other different way. And also, I know there are groups that have put free passive house plans, passive house slash net zero plans out there. Is there somewhere in the town of Concord that we could have resources that builders could actually go to to get help with this sorts of things, including homeowners themselves? I know the League of Women Voters did a net zero house tour several years ago, and the actual examples of really good things exist, but people don't know they exist. I think that there's, there's having a, there's a how to make your house net zero and get money back immediately, which is coming up next week, a Zoom seminar free.
So I think that's a question for Kate Hanley, and it's not something that the Planning Board generally deals with as far as providing information, so I'll turn it over to Kate Hanley and let her answer that question.
Thanks, Pamela.
And I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the idea of making them do extra plans, so that they have to actually see it doesn't cost more.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes, Kate.
Yeah, thanks, Pamela. There's definitely a lot of resources out there, and I'm working on some case studies right now, and will do my best to share some of those resources on the sustainability page. And that Net Zero webinar next week will be a good resource for folks as well.
Well, great. Keep up the good work. All right, thank you. All right, so excellent discussion. Just kind of what we needed to hear is that there are some alternatives for, you know, what we're hoping to do and help Concord pursue their energy goals. So thanks, Haley, for working on that. We'll look forward to what you bring back. We were going to talk now about our warrant articles. As you heard, we've got a couple of months to finalize them. And so typically, Elizabeth will kind of bring draft after draft after draft to us. She does a lot of the work, and we say, you know, oh, you missed a space here. No, we try to provide constructive feedback so that we don't get all the way to town meeting and then find out we left something out or things like that. So we'll all have to pay close attention, but this is somewhat of the beginning of the process. Elizabeth, do you mind just listing the articles that we are right now discussing, putting on the warrant?
So right now, there will definitely be the residence, the two-family and residency warrant article that was postponed from last town meeting. There will be, and what was included in your packet is the first rough draft for the floodplain conservancy bylaw update with the items in the state's model floodplain bylaw. Then I know Haley is pulling together info on earth removal and fill bylaw, and so she and I are going to touch base with that. And then I'm still waiting for input from the Public Works Director and his staff on potential amendments to the groundwater conservancy district, to currently it is primarily deals with quality issues and uses that can affect the quality of the town's water, and there's nothing really in there regarding uses that could affect the overall town's water supply as far as quantity. So they're looking into that, and that's what I, I feel like I'm forgetting one, but.
I think those are the ones we've been discussing. The other one that we've been discussing peripherally as well, in terms, after our meeting with the zoning board of appeals, we wanted to look into FAR and its effectiveness. Kate, I think you said you were going to do a little research on that. Do you think that you might find something that you might want to propose that the planning board make an amendment to that bylaw at this town meeting? Like, in other words, do you think you might have something in the next month?
I don't know. I think I'll be ready to talk more about it in two weeks.
Okay.
The next step for us is to update Matt's table that he has from 2016, looking at FAR for the homes built between 2016 and now. So Elizabeth, I would just want to touch base with you, maybe tomorrow, to talk about different sources of information that we have, and making sure we're pulling it all together, right, that I am. So, yeah, I think if that can be on the agenda in two weeks, I think that would be great, and we can get Matt in as well.
Yes, it's cameos from all the former planning board members. Let's see who else we can line up. Okay, so that's what's on the table. So what we would be doing is, we would be cleaning up, or we'd be preparing and cleaning up four or five articles for the warrant. And so it's an iterative process for those of you that are new. And so we want to give Elizabeth whatever specific feedback we have. Oh, I know what the other thing that we were going to talk about was, the bylaw, was it PRD and the bonus density, the wording, I think was what we also wanted to talk about.
So what I have tonight, I can share the screen, and we can just quickly go through the floodplain conservancy draft bylaw, and then we can go through and have the board discuss the PRD density bonus interpretation question, if that's.
Great. I think that'd be great.
So for the. So for the. And so the two documents that were included in the board's packet was the first rough draft of the amendments that would be required to the floodplain conservancy district. And then we can go through these, and then the other document that was provided is the actual state model bylaw, where I went through and either highlighted things that I felt were already included in our bylaw and where they were included, and then bold and italics things that I felt needed to be included. So for this document, all of the items that are in bold and italics would be the new items as far as part of the warrant bylaw amendment. So what I can do, and so.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, can you refresh on, are we mandated to make these updates based on state regulations?
Okay. So with the state's model bylaw, any communities that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program are mandated to make these changes at their next. And so it's not, they don't have to make it at your next town meeting, at the next town meeting where it's, you know, possible for the community to go through their amendment process. So for some communities who got the model bylaw, they had already, you know, their warrant may have already opened and closed, so they wouldn't be able to do it for that town meeting, but for the following town meeting, they'd have to. So given that our town meeting, if it had not been pushed back, then we wouldn't be doing it for this year. We would have been doing it for 2022. But because it got pushed back, we have the time to actually do this amendment for this year. But all communities that are in the National Flood Insurance Program within the next two, you know, next two years, or year and a half, will have to make these changes.
Thank you.
So the first, you know, the first big change is our definitions, where it's clarifying some definitions based on the model bylaw, and then it's actually including quite a few other definitions that aren't in our bylaw. So those are, you know, those are pretty standard, and you'll see in the, you'll see a couple of questions that I have put in the bylaw amendment. These are questions that I will be discussing with the Natural Resources Director, the Town Engineer, and the Building Commissioner on, you know, how the language deals with other aspects for items in the community. So for like this question, it's dealing with, you know, the start of construction, but it talks about installation of accessory buildings such as garages or sheds not occupied as dwelling units or not part of the main building. That may be less restrictive than our current definition as far as what permanent construction means. So those are the items that I need to check with the Building Commissioner on. And then the same thing with like the definition of definition of structure. We have, I believe, our definition of structure is more restrictive than this definition, and whether it's appropriate to have this definition in the bylaw. The one aspect is, at the beginning, and this would probably be a question for town council, is that these definitions would apply only to this section as far as the floodplain conservancy district. And because if this definition of structure only deals with a structure as it relates to flood construction, proofing, and all of those items, then it would be okay for it to differ than the definition of structure in the beginning of the zoning bylaw. And then it just, really, it goes through. And our purpose was pretty good. And then these four things that they're requiring to be added, what I found is a lot of the items that are in the state's model floodplain bylaw somewhat deal with not really zoning and how the town would deal with a use in a floodplain. A lot of it, I feel, is kind of almost educating, you know, a homeowner if their house is in, you know, in the floodplain. And I'll show you an example of that. So I'm not convinced that the zoning bylaw is the right place for some of this stuff, but the state seems to think otherwise. And so there is nothing in the state's model bylaw that deals with identifying these uses permitted without review by the board. So, you know, all of those are, you know, none of those would change. And then we get into, you know, uses permitted subject to review by the Board of Appeals. And the only thing that was different was dealing with recreational vehicles. And then we get into procedures. You know, I'm just recommending these, just to make this more neat. We don't need to list the towns and the town manager and their addresses. So we only have to reference the towns that need to be identified. And then the one item that's not part of the state's model bylaw, but we, I'm discussing with the Town Engineer and Building Commissioner and Natural Resources Director is, as I commented previously to the board when we discussed this, I believe it's since the late 70s, where any project that did propose to have fill in the floodplain was required to provide one to one and a half times compensatory storage. The Wetlands Protection Act and the town's wetland bylaw only requires one to one, but Concord has, since the late 70s, required one to one and a half times. And it's been a standing, I'm going to say, policy for the Board of Appeals that has been carried through consistently since that time. So we felt it was appropriate to actually develop that language and have it included in the bylaw. So we're working on what that language will be. The one thing I do know is that whatever language we come up with, there will be a waiver provision. There have been a couple of projects where, so the Chase Bank is a good example, where there isn't an ability to provide one to one and a half compensatory storage. There isn't an ability to provide one to one and a half compensatory storage. On that site. And there's been a couple of other projects. But the overall project and the redevelopment of the project. Has been an improvement for, you know, for many other reasons. So for Chase Bank, it was the improvement to stormwater drainage. It was getting the first floor of the building above the hundred year floodplain. It was, you know, so there were different aspects. So we did want to make sure that there was. A waiver provision to the one to one and a half. If the Natural Resources Commission. Provided that opinion that there was an overall environmental benefit. And then this is, this is where I we get into some of the items I thought. You know, a disclaimer of liability. I don't, you know, I don't know why that needs to be in a zoning bylaw, but this is the items that the. Some of the items the state has said needs to be in there. Some of these requirements are, you know, requirement to submit technical data. That's if, you know, the somebody were to come in and actually. Change the base flood elevation on a FEMA map. The only example I can think of recently is the town actually went through and did. Technical studies. For the Millbrook. And based on those very detailed technical studies, the actual hundred year floodplain elevation was modified. So this just says that if anybody comes through and provides that technical data to the town. We have to provide it to FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program State Coordinator. I don't know why that has to be in a zoning bylaw, but again. Then there's two sections regarding variances. These deal with building code issues. So it's not, again, it's. It's, it's not a zoning item, but. Those are in there and. A couple of. So this issue, this one section assure that all necessary permits are obtained. This is somewhat of an unfunded mandate and I'm not sure how. The Building Commissioner is going to deal with this item. But it basically says that the town is responsible. For making sure that applicant who comes through has acquired. All of the other state, potential state or federal permits necessary to carry out the project. So. We haven't figured out how that's going to happen, but. So that's something we're going to discuss a little bit further, I guess. And. I think. And then compensatory storage again. So that's, that's about it. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, I have a question.
Can we go back to the waiver for one to one flood storage compensation? Can you just repeat the? Reason, the rationale for including that?
Did I pass by it already? I did. So this is. Right now, this is just. Placehold on language. So there are instances, especially with redevelopment. Where the redevelopment of the site, there is, there is not an option. For somebody to do one to one and a half times compensatory storage. Because, you know. Most of the site could be, you know, in the hundred year floodplain and there's, there's very limited space that's outside of the hundred year floodplain where. Basically, when you provide the compensatory storage. So the area that you want to fill, you have to provide that same area. But at one and a half times that area and. You have to provide the same type of compensatory storage at the same elevations. That you're filling on this side. So the Wetland Protection Act says if you fill. One twenty-two, one twenty-three and, you know, two cubic. Yards in both of those. Over here, you would have to provide at one twenty-two, one twenty-three, two cubic yards of compensatory storage at each of those elevations. And it might not be possible to provide one and a half. If it's a redevelopment of the site of the, an example that may come up. Would be like Neshova Brook Bakery. Site if they come through and do any type of redevelopment of that site. It's. They may want to, you know, expand a building in one direction. And be able to provide compensatory stores somewhere else. But not at one and a half times. But there's going to be other things that they're going to do right now. There's no. Stormwater, you know, low impact development, stormwater on the site. There's. Drain pipes that, you know, don't have any. The catch basins don't have hoods and sumps and things are just draining straight to Neshova Brook. There's no treatment on site. So all of those items. Even though there can only provide one to one compensatory storage, there's other things that are going on that are. You know, adding protection or. Making the quality of the site and any type of impact to the floodplain better. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does answer the question and. I'm just, I'm struggling.
It mostly happens, yeah, it mostly happens, would happen with a redevelopment of a site, not new construction.
And, yeah, I, it seems great. I, I'm just, I feel like we need to ask the question of whether inadvertently we'll. Relax the standard here for folks that. Perhaps. Are not the situation that you just described, Elizabeth. But.
I, I, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say. The likelihood of that is, I'm not concerned with that. Given that this one to one and a half times compensatory storage has been. In place as a, just a policy and adhered to. I'm going to say ninety, you know, eight percent, ninety-nine percent of the time. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not really worried about that. And the other side of that is. You know, the town's moving forward in, you know, the last, you know, what, five? You actively in the past five years. You know, since the article at town meeting as far as sustainability. But in actuality, from the late seventies, this is probably the first sustainability step that the town of Concord took. Because the the reasons for it were not especially back then. You know, to say you provided one to one compensatory storage from an engineering standpoint, the Board of Appeals said that. Well, that, that's really, that's really challenging. I mean, you're, you're talking about details at, you know, and elevations and they felt that. You know, they just didn't want to have things be that close. So we're, we're going to have you provide a little bit extra. To make sure. So if you think about it, all of the projects over, you know, these past decades. The town of Concord has. Basically. Been dealing with climate change and, you know, providing this extra compensatory storage. So I, I don't see, I don't see there being. A change in that direction. It, it's just, it's been part of Concord for so long.
Also optional, right? Like it says, the board may allow. Kate, so I don't know if that makes you feel better, but.
What was that, Haley?
Like it says, the board may allow.
Oh, yes, definitely. It's definitely a May. And the only time that the Board of Appeals has done it has when, has been when. The Natural Resources Commission, who's required to give a recommendation on. Special permits for work in the floodplain. Has, has stated that the project is actually a benefit to the resource area.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, it looks like you have your, you know, work cut out for you. So thank you for putting all this together. We took that, what, twenty-two page document they gave you and. Cross referenced it and to boil it down to this night.
The next, yeah, the next step will be, you know, I'll, I'm going to draft just a very short explanation. You know, why the board is putting this amendment forth and. And and everything in there except for the compensatory storage requirement is a requirement under the. Model, the state's model but bylaw, so it's, it's not an option if the community wants to stay in the National Flood Insurance Program. And then I think the only added explanation will need to be that one to one and a half. And the explanation I'll put for the board's review will just be. Basically, that history of this policy and just making the policy now. A requirement, a written requirement. So. You know, people know that upfront, although to, you know, Kate's question. This policy has been around for so long. Every single engineer who does work in town, when they get a client says, well, this is what you're going to have to provide. So it, it's. Similar to Gary's comment about the, you know, the six criteria, parking relief criteria. It's, it's been around so long, it just, it just is. So. But I'll draft that for the board to review the next time.
Thank you. Um, so regarding the four bylaws that we, or for bylaws that we talked about, one is drafted, the two family and residency. And Elizabeth, if you. When you get a chance, we'll put that one back up in the section where you have for the. Twenty twenty-one annual town meeting potential articles, then. You know, folks that weren't on the committee last year can can review that because that, that one, we just make sure we've got it all. Right. You're working on the floodplain conservancy update. You're waiting for input from the DPW on the groundwater conservancy district. And Haley, you were working on earth removal and.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you still, that's right.
Sorry.
Did you want to share anything for us to think about on earth removal, Haley? Or I just want to think, do you? Or do you want to work with Elizabeth on maybe proposing? A draft that gets shared with the group at a future meeting?
Um, whatever you guys prefer, um, I think it just. You know, I'm trying not to make it too crazy, of course, but I'm just. Want to like flag some things I thought would be interesting based on other, other towns. Um. But maybe I'll just send it over email and then you, you know, we can either talk about it next time or talk about it offline with Elizabeth. And go from there.
Okay. I mean, I think if you're able to collaborate with Elizabeth to kind of get a draft going that incorporates what you found. I think that would probably be good for us to discuss. And then if you look on the website, on the town website where we have. I think it's our calendar. Under, under planning board where we have our meeting schedule. Elizabeth's trying to track upcoming potential items. And it is subject to change, of course, but it tries to help kind of so you can see kind of what's coming up. So for example. Our next meeting on the twenty-sixth, we're going to continue this discussion. So I think if you're able to work with her before then, we can review that. We can review the earth bylaw one and then also whatever Kate's got about FAR at that time. So that would be good. And then coming up in February is the Thero Depot redevelopment. Kind of a continuation of of that discussion, which again is not for this coming town meeting. So. Um, any questions or comments on this before Elizabeth kind of shows us the language of the. Other, the PRD density bonus, so we can look at that wording and make sure we're all clear on on the intent and see if we need to make any changes to that. All right. Do you mind, do you want to share your screen then, Elizabeth?
So as I. Highlighted in the agenda memo, this deals with the new density bonus section that was. Just adopted at this past town meeting. And a question that was posed to me. A person who's interested in doing a very, very small PRD. I think it's only, you know, four units. And how they interpreted. This section where it specifically states increases beyond. The basic density within the planned residential development may be authorized by the board based upon one or more of the following. So the question was, if in this small PRD, if they provided. Either, you know, just B or just B and C. Would they be able to apply for a density bonus? So I wanted to make sure because the previous. Before this amendment, the density bonus was purely based on providing affordable units. Under A. So. You know, how, how, how that first sentence reads, I can see where somebody, you know. It's one or more of the following. So it doesn't say. Authorized by the board based upon providing A and. Just A or A and B and C or, so I'm bringing it back to board to. Because I went back through the minutes and. I, back then it wasn't video, it was tapes and. I'm not sure we even, we have tapes. I would have to go back through Minute Man. Media Network to see if they still have the videos of your meetings, but this was all pre, pre COVID. So there's no Zoom meetings.
Elizabeth, if I may.
But I can.
My, my recollection of this was that we wanted to come up with additional. Additional triggers for density bonus, not layering on. Requirements on top of it having affordability. And so I did, did, my recollection is that we anticipated these being. As it says, one or more. So it could be B alone, it could be C alone, or it could be A, B and C.
I agree. I remember that being. Sort of how it was structured.
Which I, I, I think it, it's fine. I mean, it is, it's, it's still a May, it's.
Right.
You come before the planning board and then go before the zoning board of appeals. So if, you know, if you had a hundred unit PRD and all they were doing was providing C. And asking for a density bonus, you know, I'm, I'm not sure the planning board or the Board of Appeals would be inclined to providing that. If you have a very small PRD, you know. You know, three or four units and they're providing, you know, B and C. But, you know, they're, given the conversations we've had with MAPC staff as far as those smaller projects. There, there is a, you know, there is a financial tipping point as far as, you know, providing affordable units in, you know, very small. Projects. So. So I'm, I'm happy with, I'm happy with that. I think that's the right approach. I just wanted to make sure.
I, I think, I think, I think that's what, what was intended. I, I agree with everything you just said in summarizing. It, it's important to emphasize that this is an option to provide additional increases beyond basic density. And, and like I said, I think that we wanted to provide other alternatives to requiring affordable units that were responsive to things we've heard in other town planning. You know, in the long range plan and the like about smaller units and about units that are, are, are appropriate for seniors and the like.
All right. Well, thank you, Nathan and Burton, for your fine memories. That, that's actually a big help. So. All right. Um, shall we take any public comment about zoning bylaws? If you have something you'd like to add? We'd love to hear from you before we wrap up with just some administrative business.
Hey, I, I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay.
Julia, tell us your, your name and address, please. We can hear you. Julia Minor, 399 Lowell Road. And I was the person talking to Elizabeth several, over several months, years actually, about our tiny PRD out in the back of our own property. And so I just really appreciate this clarity. It's great. And I also am just really impressed with the green zoning and, and your, you know, hard work and, and everything and just feel on the same page with you and hope that this means that this development, if we do end up proposing it, can be a lot greener because we can not have the affordable part of it. So that, that's really great. So anyway, just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minor. Any other hands up or any other comments from the public? All right. I believe that the last item is the minutes from the December 14th meeting, which was the joint meeting with the ZBA. The only thing I noticed is my first name is misspelled in the second paragraph. So it's supposed to be an E, but other than that, I did not have any suggested changes. Any, anybody from the board have questions, questions, comments? Suggested changes? Would anyone like to propose adopting minutes as amended?
Let's, I move to adopt, approve the minutes as, as amended for December 14th, 2020.
A second.
All right, Mr. Seau.
Yes.
Mr. Fazette.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. McAnaney.
Yes.
Ms. Orbital. Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
And Smith Ferguson, yes. So minutes are done. Um, I'm thinking there's no more general public comment, but please speak now or hold your peace till the next meeting. Any other staff updates or liaison reports?
All right. At this time.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. We will see everybody, I think it's on the 26th, continue our discussion for the bylaw amendments. And thanks Kate and Haley for, in, in advance, for doing some research. So, all right, good night. We will adjourn at 8:55. Thanks, everybody.
Great night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye to everyone.